I think you call the Finance Committee meeting to order for Monday, September 23rd, 2019. Just a point of housekeeping. So I can only print front and back. You did not get smart where I signed my name in the adjournment on page two of your agenda. So that's the only thing that you're missing. And the executive session, if we have one, and we don't have one scheduled. So in order to save the environment...
Yeah.
Or nine pieces or ten pieces of paper. You didn't get that paid. So it ends with all the pertinent stuff. So first item I have tonight are Resolutions 113, 114, and 115. These are resolutions authorizing the Law Director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the cities of Pickerington and Reynoldsburg and the Fairfield County Commissioners for the prosecution of cases for 2020. This is an annual piece that they put out. Actually, I think in case of the county commission, they've done multi-year contracts. But with Pickerington and Reynoldsburg, these are annual negotiations, and that's what these three pieces are. Law Director Ollum is required...well, there he is. Law Director Ollum, do you want to chime in here and say what I was about to say?
Chairman Stotin, I thought you were doing a fantastic job there. Yes, these are just basically with Reynoldsburg and Pickerington our annual review contracts. With the county, we negotiate a contract instead of going to each one of the villages and doing that. So I'm not sure at this point. We did do a two-year contract this last time around. We just have to see how those negotiations go.
Okay. What's your timing to get the approval on these?
We can do three readings, please.
Okay. Are there any questions? And yes, Mr. Woodruff?
Do you anticipate any difficulties or any increases?
Hopefully some increases.
I was gonna say, how's the numbers been?
Pretty good. Pretty good. We've done some adjustments with the Reynoldsburg contract over the years and, of course, with the county contract. The Pickerington contract, we kind of started with a higher number at the beginning, so it's been less adjustments on that one. But what I do in this process is kind of go back and look at case volumes with regard to the jurisdictions and things like that and to see how those look and try and do a comparison, you know, so that, in essence, if you will, we're trying to get, you know, a dollar amount that's equal for all the jurisdictions, you know, fairness or whatever we're paying, so.
And volume-wise, how does that compare to our own volume as far as all those together?
Well, you know, there's, I mean, approximately 22,000, 23,000 cases have come through the municipal court. A lot of those, of course, are trafficked and they get paid out through the traffic bureau. But, you know, we've seen an increase, but I'd say my office, we probably deal with, put our hands on and deal with seven or eight thousand cases a year that we're actually working through. Different stages. Some of those may go all the way to a jury trial. Some of those may resolve themselves, you know, at the first hearing, the arraignment on the case. So, you know, the volume is always there. It's just a matter of seeing if we can...and that's the attempt, is to try and equate that cost across all areas.
Thank you for the information.
Further questions? We'll go three readings on all three pieces. The two odd pieces will be Holly, and the even piece will be Don on the second. Very good. Thank you, sir. Moving on to Resolution 11619. That's a resolution to appropriate in the L.DOT Fund 208 an amount of $20,000 that's just coming through public works. Mr. Schoenover?
Yeah, this is for some normal yearly summer overtime and some vacation pay as well. Mr. Hens is asking for them. We're going to ask for suspension this evening.
Timing?
We're gonna ask for suspension.
I'm sorry. That's part of when you said you're ask for suspension, and it will maybe do one reading.
One reading, please.
Who's your second on that?
That's Ms. Tina.
Very good. So seeing no further discussion, we will suspend, ask for suspension on 11619. Next item I have is 11719. That's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Fairfield County General Health District for Public Health Services. So I'm gonna turn this over to Mayor Sheffler or Service Safety Director Martin, whoever would like to speak to it.
Well, he's really the health department expert, but I'll address it at least initially. Our two-year contract was up. We have had several meetings with some of the commissioners, the health department commissioners, not the county commissioners. In talking about pay, we have asked lots of questions and have gotten satisfied that the rate that we're paying is on a cap per capita basis, equivalent to what the other entities in the county are paying. So I think last year's contract was a little over $300,000. This is about a two to two-and-a-half percent increase, as I recall. It's been a while since I've looked at it, so.
This contract also gives the same price for the next two years. There's not an increase in the second year. And I was at the district advisory council when they have a discussion about it. They were hoping that we would save the day financially, but I got an opportunity to address the committee, to talk about our financial needs as a city. And I think that really helped a lot when the mayor was able to talk and negotiate. And so I think they were initially coming in with almost like a request of seven, eight percent increase. But we subbed that to 2.5 for two years. If you look at Section 1, you kind of see the services that they're required to provide by Ohio law, but they also have a section in that, Section 1, of other services they provide beyond that, too, as well. Okay. Questions for the administration on this contract? As again, we are required to provide these services, so we either do them ourselves or contract with someone to do them on our behalf, correct?
Yes.
Timing on this?
Three readings.
Three readings on this? Very good. Okay. We will go three readings. Seeing for the comments, we'll go three readings on 117. Holly will second that one, please. Next item I have is 11819. That's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with CMI for application software for the income tax department. I believe Amy is back there. Come on up and kind of update us from where we were and just kind of give us a brief overview. I know you gave us an update last time, but let's bring it home since you need us to pass this.
That's right. This is just gonna let the mayor renew our contract with CMI for a major overhaul and update. The cost is around $150,000, but it's an extensive three-module system that will allow us to improve our online tax tool. It'll allow us to be able to scan and import documents, which we are unable to do currently, and we will be able to report all the things that you want to know, so.
There's a lot.
And all the things you don't want to know. Put it that way.
That's the other part. Well, this is good. I know we talked a little bit about it. I think you talked about a little lesson for your payback on expenses by upgrading the application to do, you know, do things that a normal application should do in this day and age, which will also help you with collections and efficiencies in the office. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Any questions for Amy while we have her here to work her over real good? Don't let her...we shouldn't let her slide this easily. I mean, it's her first...
She's pretty good.
Oh, come on. All right. Holly's giving you a pass, so. All right, well, seeing none, what's your timing on this? Do you have a contract that needs to...
We have one that's being looked at, yes. So we would like to get this in play within two readings, so we can move forward this fall and get everything, barring the law director's blessing, before the next tax season.
Okay. We will ask for two readings. Our next meeting's in three weeks, so that gives a little extra time to get that thing buttoned up, so.
Thank you.
Let us hear a bell.
It's not Jerry this time.
Sorry.
I didn't hear a bell. I hate it.
That's for Jerry trash from earlier.
All right. Well, very good. Thank you. We appreciate it, and again, we look forward to, at least I look forward to seeing all the wonderful output from this new application.
Certainly.
And how much more efficient you're going to become. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go two readings on 118. Mr. McDaniel, will you be the second on that, please?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Next item I have is Resolution 120. That's a resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an amendment to the engineering agreement for the Fifth, Sixth, Forest Rose project design, and this is coming through Water, Water Pollution. Mr. Woodruff?
And Denise is right here, and she will update us.
Good evening. The Fifth, Sixth Forest Rose project is one of our combined sewer overflow projects. We are in the process of going through to get a zero-interest loan from Ohio EPA for this. So one of the things we have to do as part of the loan is get an engineering agreement for construction administration. So this is the resolution to let us do that.
So this is only for the engineering piece? It's not for the entire project?
No, you've already authorized us to advertise for bids, so I'll be back hopefully in two weeks with the enter into a contract.
Okay.
Right. It'll be three weeks.
So the engineering piece of the project is $514,000?
Yes.
And what's the project cost approximately?
Our engineer's estimate is 3.5 million.
Okay. And which sewer is this?
This is the Fifth, Sixth Forest Rose.
Yeah, you have a number.
So it's combined sewer overflow 1012 and 1013. The project will go Fifth Avenue from Memorial to High Street. Forest Rose from Fifth to Sixth, and Sixth Avenue from Forest Rose to High Street.
Okay.
It's gonna cover a lot of area.
Yep. And when we're done with...when do we expect this to start and end?
We have to give a notice to proceed by the end of the year, and we're talking to contractors. We're expecting a 12-to-15-month project, depending on when they can get started.
Yes, that's what I'm asking you, kind of, when are we putting a shovel in the ground, so to speak?
Contractors are telling us they won't be available until May of next year.
Okay. So that's, yeah, so we're looking like May 2020 to, let's call it October 2021 or something like that?
Something like that.
Okay. Questions or further questions? Mr. Woodruff, what's your timing?
Three readings, and Mr. Hall will second.
Very good. Thank you. How many will that leave us as far as combined sewers after that?
We still have approximately 10 projects left to go.
Wow. It just seems like it'll never end.
We're half a group.
Yeah, I know. I know. I don't think I'm gonna outlive the sewer separation project.
And we're actually quite a bit ahead of most cities our size.
Well, that's true. It's a good point, but, boy, it's a labor of love, isn't it? All right. Next item I have is Resolution 12119. That's a resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids for the Union Mulberry Phase 3 Stormwater Sewer Project. Again, Mr. Woodruff coming through Water, Water Pollution.
And Denise?
So this is, at long last, the last of the Union Mulberry project. This is Union Street and Mulberry Street, west of Brumfield to the junction of the two streets. Includes some work on Klein Court. The gas line has been relocated. The water line is finally relocated, and we are ready to start the storm and street project here. The problem is, is we don't have a lot of contractors. The contractors that we have talked to said they're not available till May. So we're asking to go ahead and authorize to advertise for bids, but we don't have a bid date yet, and we're thinking...we were originally going to go November 1st, and we're thinking now we ought to wait till January, and maybe some bidders will be available. So at this point, we're just gonna ask you to advertise, and we'll figure out the schedule. A lot of it'll depend on the Fifth, Sixth Forest Rose bid, if there's interest out there.
Okay.
And Denise brings up a good point, Mr. Stotin, is we're having a lot of difficulties in both water and sewer, and I'm sure in some of the other areas, getting contractors to bid because it's a market now for the contractors market, and they've got more business than they know what to do with. And a couple of years ago, we were getting real good low bids because nobody had money, and we had a little bit of money in our sewer and water funds. But right now, we're having difficulties, and bids tend to come in. We have one bid we're gonna come back to you with because it came over the allowable amount that our engineers felt we should have to pay, yet looking around, we're not gonna have much choice, but we said we're gonna have to redo it and rebid it. But this is a problem now because of, there's so many Cs out there with money that want to do work.
The curse of a good economy.
Yep.
Who would think you'd hear that phrase?
Three readings. Mr. McDaniel.
Other questions from anybody? All right. Now, you said the street, is that like to finish the paving and everything? Isn't this one of these areas that we didn't pave on purpose?
Yes. We're gonna, we're going to be lowering the streets to let the stormwater run down the streets and away from the property. So we'll be rebuilding both Union and Mulberry.
Okay. And then resurface in it, and they'll all be happy.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. I'm sorry.
We're not sure about Mrs. Tina. She'll be happy with this.
We'll be happy.
We'll try. We'll try. It's hard over there to get her happy.
Hey, my street was already torn up for a project. I'm happy.
Mr. Woodruff, I did not hear your second. Who was that?
Mr. McDaniel.
I have a question. It's not my street.
Very good. All right. Very good. So we'll go three readings. I'm sorry. Throw something at me. Mrs. Bobbitt has a question.
How about Carl Drive? Because in the original plan, Carl was listed also.
Oh, look at this. Looking for a favor in a good economy.
There's a small section of Carl to correct a drainage issue, and then I believe the plan after that will be the next year after I'm done. Then paving money will go in to finish Carl in Ohio and the streets that we're not doing work on that haven't been paved yet.
Okay. I wasn't really speaking of just paving. I was speaking of the infrastructure underneath. So there's gonna be no...
There'll be storm sewer on Carl.
Okay.
Down to the curve.
Okay.
Where we have that drainage issue.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right. You good, Mrs. Bobbitt?
I'm good.
Excellent. All right. So we'll go three readings on 12119. Next item I have is 12219, and that's a resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a change order for the Pioneer Alley Strom Sewer, not to be confused with the Storm Sewer, replacement project, and for the issuance of a Vennamout certificate. Mr. Woodruff, again, coming through your committee.
And Denise, again.
So this is wrapping up the Pioneer Alley sewer. The majority of this change order is because Greg Hens decided that instead of doing a trench repair on the alley, he wanted to go ahead and pave the whole alley, so more asphalt when we got into paving the alley than we got into curb ramps at Mulberry and putting concrete collars around the sanitary sewer and all those things that go into a paving project that don't necessarily go into a trench repair on a storm sewer. So this is the final, I believe, the final change order, and like I said, the majority of that is for the paving, and that will be paid by L.DOT out of paving funds.
Okay.
One reading, and Mr. Hall will be the second, so we'll suspend tonight.
Any questions on 12219? Seeing none, we will suspend on that as well.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next item I have is 12319. That's a resolution to appropriate in the Park Fund 212 an amount of $21,000. This is coming through service. Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you very much. I believe Mike Tharp's back there, and he will speak to this temporary resolution.
Good evening. The small piece of this one, the $1,000, is we had an employee reach a milestone that I guess I didn't see coming. So that $1,000 is to put in, sick to buy out to make that process happen for him. The $20,000, we've had a lawnmower, the biggest lawnmower in our fleet, that has been down all summer, which has caused havoc in the parks a bit. But, so to repair this, it's a 16-plus-thousand-dollar price tag just for parts. So this lawnmower is not supposed to be cycled out until 2023, so we've got a couple more years to get out of this thing to make this work.
Tell them how old it is.
It'll be 15 years old in 2023. So what are we setting at 12, almost 13 years old? The parts that we have to have for this mower are custom-made because the mower's out of, you know, they don't make these parts anymore. So they're, each time we need one, they make one, and we needed two.
And what's a new one cost? Brand-new one?
$80,000. Yeah.
How many readings?
Three's fine.
Questions? Who's your second?
Look here. If it's Becky. Wait a second. Let me look.
Becky, wait a second. Let me look.
It's Jerry. Jerry, are you odd or even?
I have no idea.
I know.
She thinks I'm odd, so.
I know. It's Jerry. I'm sorry.
Okay. Very good. All right. So we'll go three readings on 12319. Thank you, sir. Next item I have on the agenda is 12419. That's a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and enter into a contract with the Ohio Attorney General's Office for the collection of past due tax dollars and non-filing delinquency issues. And I think Amy's gonna give us some more information. Come on back up here.
Yes, this is just to allow the mayor to go into an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General's Office and use their strong arm for collections and trying to nail down some of these people who haven't paid for a few years and/or have shorted the city maybe a little bit. So that's what this is all about.
What's the cost for this agreement?
The Ohio Attorney General passes the cost on to the taxpayer, so it costs us nothing. The threshold for us is $500. So they have to owe at least $500 before we can engage their services for collection.
Okay. And apparently, we have enough people that owe us $500 or more that we're gonna be able to keep them busy?
We have a few, yes.
Okay.
And the perk to this, if there is a perk, is the Attorney General's able to offset refunds, which, so if someone owes that are getting a refund at the federal or state level, they can offset their refunds by their tax that they owe us, so.
So I assume they take a cut of the collection, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Is there, do you have any idea what that is?
10%.
Is it 10%?
Okay. Well, that seems low for collection services.
It is.
Typically, they're much like 35% or something.
Yes, between 20 and 30.
Okay. Well, this is good. I mean, how much effort does it require on your, you and your team's side?
We haven't gotten through the process yet. We needed to do this first step of setting the resolution with the mayor to be able to enter in, and then we can make contact with their office and find out the rest of the steps. But we'll be uploading a file for them and whatever their specifications are, parameters.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Mrs. Tina?
With this going on and then what you spoke about last time...
Uh-huh.
So have none of these things been going on all along? Or is this all new things? Or is...
The AG's office is a new thing that they just put in last year.
So this is something they just put in?
Yes.
So it's not like...
The AG's portion of it. We do use an outside source for collections, but with House Bill 5, we are no longer to pass those collection costs on to the taxpayer pre-trial. So, you know, the lawyers saw it coming and have reduced our costs a little bit, but if we can get away with not paying any cost or minimal cost, this is the route that we've tried to look into, at least, to make sense.
Agreed? Yes, Mr. Hall?
Do we have any sense of how much we're likely to recover from this process?
Not yet.
I mean, on a monthly basis, talk about what we're kind of collecting through other sources right now on back taxes.
On back taxes? I don't know. I mean, we've got a check today. I would say it was around $10,000 on what they were collecting, the company that we're using. But our reporting is so primitive that trying to run these reports, we can go back three years on people that have filed. If you haven't filed, we can go back a little bit further, and it's just trying to get through all of the data that we have, whether it was input correctly, whether it was labeled correctly. There's a lot of auditing of each of these accounts, and it's pulling them from the system into a spreadsheet, trying to sort and figure out, are they already in collections? Have they left the state? Have they died? There's a lot of things that we have to look into.
But I think your question is, you know, what's the potential? The potential, I think, is high.
The potential is very high. Correct.
Right now, we're in a, we're in a couple such services that are collecting things for us, and I would say on average, it's about a $10,000 get on a monthly basis.
Yes.
And with another source with better information and better records that we'll get from the tax application, I think that number can be significantly higher than what we get.
And with our source having the ability to get it back through income tax returns and stuff like that, makes it a better option of getting some money, too.
Correct. And the state also has the ability to see who's filed state returns and federal returns, which we do not have that capability. So they can, they have a lot of matching that they're able to do with taxpayers.
And that's key.
Yes, sir.
Sounds good.
All right. Other questions? Very good. Thank you. When you, when you get an idea, when you get into contracting, you know what the process is a little bit, if you wouldn't mind coming back and kind of giving us an update, I'd appreciate that.
Certainly.
What is our timing on this?
Three readings is fine.
Okay. We'll go three readings on 12419. Mr. McDaniel, will you second that, please?
Yes.
The next item that I have are the two walk-in pieces, which are ordinances 15 and 16, and this looks an awful lot like electric aggregation, coming through the Finance Committee meeting. I've not seen this, so I'm going to defer, I guess, to the Law Director?
I guess initially I'll turn over the floor to Mayor.
Okay.
Unless, Mayor, if you wanna...
So Randall's deep background. I'm 30,000-foot view. So some of you may know that our electric aggregation contract has to be renewed every three years, and this is the year it has to be renewed. Always causes a lot of angst and calls into City Hall and to the City of Law Director's Office. And we have been talking to an organization called the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, which is made up of 250 municipalities, started in northeastern Ohio, is why it's called that. But it has a number of benefits to us in that we don't have to go out for bid every three years. They are, because it's such a large consortium of municipalities, they negotiate rates on an ongoing basis. And they also have a lot of services that they offer to citizens or consumers that we don't get from FirstEnergy. We have determined that it's likely, because of the low number of bidders in the past, that FirstEnergy will probably be the low bidder again, and there's a lot of issues with FirstEnergy, not to mention the initiative petition for House Bill 6, which the legislature passed and bailed out FirstEnergy's nuclear power plants. So that's gonna be in the news a lot. Also, that the NOPEC rates are better than FirstEnergy's, and specifically, we can So that's going to be in the news a lot. Also, that the NOPEC rates are better than FirstEnergy's, and specifically, we can also buy all the city's electricity through NOPEC at cost rather than at market rate. So a lot of advantages to doing this. What we would like to do, this requires us to join NOPEC as a member. It would give the City of Lancaster a spot on their board. So we do have some voice. And a number of other benefits, I know Randall, I don't know what I've missed, would you like to add?
Yeah, Mayor kind of touched on most things. I think one of the bigger things for me, of course, is when we started this electric aggregation, you know, the whole purpose of that was to get a lower energy cost to the residents and our small businesses. In the homework that I've done on this, it looks like, you know, they have greater buying power, you know, than we do individually. Right now, so what this change would be, right now, we have our, we are our own electric aggregator, and we have our own plan of governance and bylaws as the City of Lancaster. And so that's why every three years, we're going out on the market and we're, you know, bidding our contracts. We do two bids, one for the electric aggregation program for residential homes and small businesses. And then we do another bid, separate bid, for our own municipal electric accounts, just because we're a high-volume user, whatever, and splitting those accounts out. And we've done that now through two three-year cycles, which forces us, I mean, it's one of those situations where, you know, you're doing it just seldom enough that you're, you know, really an expert at it. But as the mayor said, with regard to bidding, I've seen a decline in the number of bidders to come, you know, come to the table. Not that that's a bad thing, I think we've had good rates going through this process. But what we change is, is that we would join NOPEC, which is a council of governments. And as the mayor said, I think there's about 250 current other Ohio governments that are in this, and they use that collective buying power. And so what we would do is, we would still be, Lancaster would still be an aggregator of electricity, we would just be an aggregator through NOPEC. So NOPEC, we would join NOPEC, NOPEC is the aggregator of electricity, which would save us from, you know, filing with the Public Utilities Commission every two years as our own individual aggregator. And so the two pieces you have in front of you, in order to do that, we, of course, have to go into an agreement with NOPEC, we adopt their bylaws, and then we adopt their plan of governance as an aggregator. So, and of course, you know, it's one of those things, we're buying, you know, we're buying a utility commodity or whatever in the market that's constantly fluctuating and changing. The NOPEC folks, I want to say within it, they have 24, I want to say staff people, but, you know, one of the things that constantly goes is, they're constantly in the market, buying, you know, negotiating. As the mayor said, there's a lot of incentive programs that we can't offer. When we go out for bid, we do a, we're looking for a fixed price. And one of the elements that we want to add to that is some, if for whatever reason our fixed price, if the market actually dropped below our fixed price, you need some sort of mechanism, you know, that you're, we're all not stuck in three years of paying this higher price and the market's down here. So we need to negotiate into that some sort of reduction off a market price that we can switch to. And that's another negotiating thing. Within NOPEC, the nice thing about this program is they have a great website, and folks can go in, and you can actually pick what you want. I mean, if you wanted to do the fixed rate as a resident, you wanted to do the fixed rate, you could do the fixed rate, and you can see the price to compare whatever the market price. But if you wanted to, as a resident, you could do what they call kind of a variable thing, where you're just taking 6% below what the market rate is, and you're kind of riding the market a little bit more. But that's your choice, that's your selection. Same thing with small businesses, they can do that, but I think their reduction is maybe 4%. So they also, through NOPEC, they offer grants to small businesses. So if a small business is doing some sort of project or has some sort of project that will, that's centered around, you know, electric cost savings or things like that, they can apply themselves to NOPEC or whatever for a grant for that. The city can apply for grants to NOPEC or whatever for improvement projects, say City Hall comes to mind or something like that. So there's just a lot of program advantages with this, not only the buying power, of course, the larger buying power, but the programming that, you know, we can't capture something like that in, and don't get me wrong, I think that the six years that we've had, the way we've done it, I think has been good because ultimately we've accomplished the mission of an aggregation program, which is to get us a lower cost for electricity. We've accomplished that. But I think going forward, this is something that brings greater benefits, if you will, to our electric aggregation program. And as the mayor said, fantastic for us, I mean, from the city as far as cost. Now, granted, you know, the enterprise funds or whatever, we'll see that savings, but if, if where all of their members get electricity at cost, there's no way I'd be able to, you know, in the bidding process or whatever, find that, because you're always dealing, I mean, they're going to pad that or whatever to get their profit out of it when you're going to bidding. So from the city municipal accounts, electric accounts, it can't, and from what I've seen and my investigation into this, they're actually outdoing probably what I'd find myself or whatever out there bidding for the aggregation program.
The only other question is, when we went to the FirstEnergy deal, the big uproar was, well, can I opt out of that?
Yeah, this, yes. And this is, and people get mad about that because, you know, the phone calls you get, and the law requires that you have to cycle through, I think it's every two years, you have to be given the option or whatever to opt out, and those letters have to go out. And every time they go out, you know, I get phone calls from folks that are, you know, you're taking away my constitutional rights and things like that, and basically arguing that, you know, it should be an opt-in program. And the whole reason it's opt-out versus opt-in is to get the best pricing and the best feel for everybody.
You need the volume.
You got to tell them you're going to have this many customers, minus some, not, we're starting with one, maybe you have one, I'll say I'll join. So it has to be an opt-out program so you can get that best pricing, group pricing and everything. And it's not, you know, we try to make it as simple as possible, you're just checking off on a card if you don't want to be a part of the program or whatever, you can get out. The other neat thing within NOPEC, though, is something that we couldn't offer, is you can actually, as an individual, go into their website, and if you're on the fixed and you want, you know, you think the market's looking, you want to go variable, you can switch back and forth between the programs at something, you know.
If you have that kind of time.
Yes, if you have that kind of time.
Mr. Woodruff?
Just a question, because it sounds very good, I think, but my, with anything, when you join an organization, sometimes there's a fee. So is there a cost involved in joining this group, or?
No, there's no cost or whatever to us joining into the group. Actually, with us joining in, it just gives them even greater, you know, buying power or whatever to hopefully get...
And they make their money there. Okay, that's why I wondered. Thank you.
Mr. Martin? Also, we do have to conduct two public meetings. Mr. Hall, could you address that?
Yes, yes, we'll have to. We did this, I don't know if some of you may remember way back in 12, 13, we did this ourselves and kind of started our aggregation program. Yes, we have to have two, by statute, you know, two public hearings on it. Now, we can have those, however council decides, and we can do them, you know, I know we always usually have a public hearing at the council meeting, and we could do one of those, but actually have these, the first, you know, the other meeting earlier in that day, we can space them out. We would like us to attack that, but we have to.
Well, you can work with President Wu on that, and we will move on. But again, another, no different than the FirstEnergy deal, if you chose to opt out, you paid more money in that deal, I believe, as opposed to what you paid with FirstEnergy.
You could get out of the program without, they couldn't charge you to get out.
I understand. No, 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 no. Your kilowatt per hour price was...
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. You go back, yeah.
Yeah, if you opted out, you paid more.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So, and that's very similar to what we did in the past, a much bigger consortium, more volume in there, which means certainly better pricing, and even the city benefits much, much more this time, because we actually get the cost of energy at cost is good.
And last thing I say, I mean, it is a big thing. We would be the first central Ohio community to join this, and because of that, we not only get, it's a council of governments, so there's a council of everybody there, and everyone who's a member is a part of that, but they have a process or whatever for each region or whatever to actually be on the executive board, if you will, I'm not exactly sure of the name that they have for it. We actually have a seat on that board because we're the central Ohio contingent. So it gives us an opportunity to have a greater voice, if you will, in the organization.
That's excellent. Are there further questions on this? So I'm assuming since we have to have public hearings and things like that, this is going to be three readings for each piece?
Yes, sir.
All right. What's the difference between the two pieces of legislation?
So the first one, 15-19, is broken out. This is actually authorizing us to basically negotiate and enter into the agreement with NOPEC and adopting their bylaws. And then the second separate piece is actually to adopt their plan of operation governance of the aggregation program.
Okay. A public hearing will cover both?
Yes, correct, yes. And any questions, though?
Right.
Public hearings are really to hopefully educate the public. The thing on this is really to make sure the public understands, you know, what we're doing.
Very good. So Holly, you'll be 15, and Don, you'll be 16, that would be it. All right. So we will do three readings on both ordinance 15 and 16. Are there any departmental updates this evening? Yes, Auditor Nettles?
I just wanted to let you council be aware that next meeting, I will be bringing two pieces of legislation. As Chairman Stotan knows, I do love to set up new accounts. I'm setting up two, two funds. One is for the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. Since they switched to prospective billing, trying to give it a go into the, where we were paying it out of prior, it's become quite a few transactions and a little bit more work to keep track of the ins and the outs. So I want to segregate that so it's solely workers' comp, so it doesn't get convoluted with other items. And then I wanted to set up another fund for the hotel motel tax that is collected by the Income Tax Department. This way, that monies are segregated from everybody else, because 95% of all the collections goes to the visitors of the convention bureau. So that's kind of mostly the cash in. We get to keep 5% of the collections for administrative costs. So this is going to be an ease for the Income Tax Department and my office to keep track of that cash flow coming in and out. So it's just that cash flow tracking mechanism that I want to set up.
Looking forward to it. Terribly exciting stuff.
I guess.
Thank you. All right, further departmental updates? All right, seeing none, I will defer to President Wu for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have temporary resolution 119-19, a resolution to set the 2020 City Council and Finance Committee meetings coming through law. Mr. Groff?
Yes, this is inserting next year's council meetings. So I'm sure Mr. Woodruff will want to pay attention to that, it's what we're coming in each month.
Especially one date, one month I'm paying attention to.
At this point, I don't care if you go to four months. I would be here.
Someone's a short timer. Someone's a short timer, yes. All right, so you saw those dates in your packet, they do currently track with our current template of dates, and so we'll have opportunity to discuss those in the main meeting. Mr. Groff, who is your second?
Mr. Hall.
Mr. Hall? And this will go three readings?
Yes.
Three readings then on temporary resolution 119-19. We also have tonight temporary ordinance 14-19, an ordinance to accept the final plat for Misty Meadows, section four. This coming through code enforcement and zoning. Ms. Teener?
Yes, I think Stephen Terror can speak to this, adding more on to building that Misty Meadows.
Yes, good evening. After many years, we finally have a developer that's looking at expanding Misty Meadows. It's been almost 15 years now, since, I think, 2004, 2005, since the freeze of section, section three was cladded. A lot of those lots sat empty with the Great Recession. Last year, a lot of those were filled out, and it's, the subdivision, in my understanding, is pretty much filled out, so there's developers coming in, and there are actually 13 lots, I believe, left in section three, where the infrastructure's not been constructed. And then there's a vacant property, currently vacant, that is going to be the section four. So we've been working with them to develop plans, which are approved, and, and again, they're going to move forward with the section four, which is going to add 35 lots, going to be putting in new roads, infrastructure, stormwater improvements, all that. And we brought the final plat for planning from generally this month, they approved it, and the next step is to go into the council meeting. Be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has about this subdivision.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Willsted? Ms. Teener?
And there does not need to be a public hearing, because it's just adding on to the phase, correct?
I'm not aware that there needs to be one.
Do we need, no, we do not. I just want to get that out there.
All right, other questions then for Ms.? I was looking at my list of required public hearings, it's not all there. Anyone else have questions? What's your timing, Ms. Teener?
Three readings and Mr. Groff.
Three readings with Mr. Groff as the second. Thank you very much, Mr. Willsted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teener. That's all I have for this evening. I will send it back to the chairman.
Any other items for finance? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am.
Second. You are adjourned, it is 6:42.
The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at approximately 6:50.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids &amp; Cop State, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful, and just as important, that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. Due to the recent success of the new car market, there is a large inventory of used cars available for resale. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for. With over 15 years at this location and 27 years' experience in the business, we are the best place to go to find your next car, truck, van, or SUV. As a member of the Better Business Bureau, we are a Carfax Advantage dealer and offer great financing rates through a local area bank, with warranties available on most vehicles. We know your time is valuable, so we take special pride in making sure that you get what you came for at a price that you can afford.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frank E. Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster or 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to be here together once again to serve the citizens of Lancaster. We ask that as we go about the work set before us, that you would give us guidance, lead, guide, and direct, so that we would know what to do that is in the best interest of those who have put us here to serve, and we'll be sure to give you all the glory, in Jesus' name, amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everyone's good, please check and make sure your microphones are on. Please call the world.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Groff?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stotan?
Here.
Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Woodruff?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance tonight, reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated September 9th, 2019.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of city officials?
There is one, email dated September 17, 2019, regarding the Economic Development Committee meeting agenda submitted by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
Again, there is only one, email dated September 12, 2019, regarding Lancaster City Council, submitted by Rob Moore, principal at Sciota Analysis.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no special presentations tonight, are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
During this time at Lancaster City Council, we set time aside to allow the voters and
taxpayers of the city of Lancaster to address council on any issue or item that you would like. If you'd like to address Lancaster City Council tonight, we ask that you would please come to the podium, sign in with your name and address at the clipboard, and state the name, the same for the record. In accordance with the rules of City Council, we would ask that you would keep your comments to five minutes or less. We'll also ask you to note that while at a later portion of tonight's meeting, members of City Council may choose to respond to you, they will not do so during this portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Yes, ma'am. Please come along. If you'll please just state your name and address for the record, you can sign in after your comments.
My name is Debbie Probasco. I live at 850 Second Street, Lancaster, Ohio. I'm also representing the south end block watch.
Thank you, go ahead.
The traffic light at Hubert and Broad is set to come down, and that will be a two-way stop. On behalf of the block watch and all the neighbors around there and various other people, we are asking that that be taken under advisement, because that traffic light was put up for pedestrian safety. If you look at the intersection right now, they have the stop signs up with a do not cross at this section. There's a sign posted there. There is also one at the 33 ramp. Therefore, there is nowhere on Broad Street that you can cross from the west side to the east side. Right on Hubert Avenue alone, you have the Church of Good Hope, the Salvation Army, CTC, and Dollar General. Many people in that area do not have cars. Their children walk to school. So my question is, when the study was done, how it was done, because I did a study of my own. On Monday, of 9:16 of 19, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., 201 cars went through that intersection going north, south, turning off on Hubert or turning off on a street down further. On Wednesday of 9:18, from 7:40 a.m. to 8:40 a.m., I marked a mark on a piece of paper. There's 281 cars that went north and south on Broad. That morning, 13 adults attempted to cross the street. Nine children going to school attempted to cross the street. All of them are taking their lives in their own hands. Once that traffic signal started flashing red and yellow, Broad Street doesn't stop. We've got Hubert stopping. So it's a dangerous situation. Years ago, when they took the light down, within a month, it was put back up. There were too many accidents, too many people getting hit by cars. So I asked that this be taken under advisement, and the study reconducted there at that intersection before that comes a two-way stop. It's dangerous, and it's, I don't understand the logic in removing that light when you have school-aged children to have to cross Broad Street in order to get to school. Now, Thursday morning, at two different times, there's two people in wheelchairs going, they would have been going north on Broad at curbside. So the cars are going out around those people in the wheelchair, because there's no sidewalks in the 700 block of Broad. In the 800 block of Broad, on the east side, there's five driveways. On the west side, there's five driveways. You have Clark Street intersecting both east and west. You have Cleveland Avenue intersecting from the west. So where are people supposed to cross Broad Street once you remove and make that a two-way stop? Now they're having a hard time doing it. So what's going to happen when that flashing light comes down? So I don't know who this should go to. People in the block watch have called. They were told that Tim Dietz did a study on this. They have called him. He's not returned the phone calls. Three people have called him, asked that they do another study and a proper study. Someone's going to get hurt, and it's going to be serious when they do, because I clocked a guy the other day going 53 miles per hour. I purposely followed him because he flies down Broad Street all the time. Once they get through Reese and Broad, there's, there's nowhere for them to stop. It's complete shot. So I asked someone to please step up to the plate and protect the pedestrians and the people that live in the south end of Lancaster.
Your time has expired. Thank you for being here, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Probasco, if you could remember, please to sign in right there for us, too. You did? Oh, you're stealthy. Thank you. Very good. Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Well, thank you all for being here tonight. Are there any reports of standing committees?
There are three. Finance Committee meeting minutes for September 23, 2019, submitted by Mr. Stoughton. Water Water Pollution Control meeting minutes for September 18, 2019, submitted by Mr. Woodford. And finally, the Law Committee meeting minutes for August 14, 2019, submitted by Mr. Groff.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of temporary resolution 102-19.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Fairfield County Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, offered by Mr. Stoughton, seconded by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporary 102-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 102-19. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a required, this legislation passed by council and sent on to the county auditor for specific collection of property tax and property tax.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodford?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 102-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 104-19.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement and bylaws of the Ohio Transit Risk Pool, offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon then written record, temporary resolution 104-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 104-19. Mr. Schoonover.
Uh, yeah, this resolution allows public transit to join the Ohio Transit Risk Pool at no cost to the city. The risk pool gives us some extra resources and also in the, with the possibility of bringing transit in-house, that we'll discuss later, we can get our insurance rates through the risk pool.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodford?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 104-19 passes nine to zero. We now have second reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 106-19.
A resolution to amend appropriation budgets, then amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor, and the General Fund 101 and Vowel Fund 225, offered by Mr. Stoughton, seconded by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second reading.
Second reading on temporary resolution 106-19. Temporary resolution 107-19.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, or excuse me, that council suspend.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the General Fund 101, increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the .45 Police and Fire Levy Fund 247, amend the certificate with the county auditor, and to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the .15 Fire Levy Fund 246, offered by Mr. Hall, seconded by Mr. Woodford.
Ah, we're ready for you, Mr. President.
One of these days, I'm going to get this right.
It's all right.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of the resolution temporarily numbered 107-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 107-19. Discussion, Mr. Hall.
Yes, as noted in our last meeting, we need additional resources in the fire department to cover significant overtime that has, was not previously planned for because of some losses in, in terms of our full-time staff. This will be largely offset by reductions in salary expenditures.
Okay, very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodford?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 107-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 107-19. Further discussion, Mr. Hall?
None at this time.
Discussion around the table. Mr. Stoughton.
I'm just trying to push this to the auditor here real quick. When you did this piece of legislation, this is, this is government 101 here. You can't really tell in here that it's really a fire department piece, which is why I ask you, I kind of reached back to you, give a little more information. So the only thing I would ask you in the future, and I don't know if you wrote this or fire wrote this, but in that whereas, we need to kind of identify.
I did not write this one for the things that was kind of gone through, and I see your point for the things of saying whereas the fire, because I usually, if I try to help, I try to state which department it is.
Sure. And the problem is that references that .45 Police and Fire Levy Fund in there, and talking about .15 Fire Levy. So, and as we made the special revenue accounts, it gets a little confusing as to whether it's police, it's fire, or it's both, which is why I reached back to you to ask you for some clarification on exactly what it was, so.
And I apologize for not getting right back to the things, but of course, for mine is that I get, and I work with the account numbers every day, so it kind of is second nature to me where you guys do not, so.
It's like I tell my IT team, you can talk in that jury room all day long, and it's perfect sense to you, but everybody else is upset. So, anyway, I'm just pointing out, when I reached out to you, and I think in fact, I've changed that there are certain stuff out there that's going to make sure we're able to reach the fire.
Okay.
Anyway, just a point.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodford?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 107-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 110-19.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for mowing and other landscape maintenance services for city cemeteries, offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover.
Uh, second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution 110-19. Temporary resolution 112-19.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to negotiate and enter into land purchases for right-of-way dedications and temporary work easements as necessary for the ED Road Safety Improvement Project, offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading on temporary resolution number 112-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading on temporary resolution 112-19. Mrs. Bobbitt?
Just as it reads, this is, first off, for safety, and it's for our ED Road Columbus Street intersection. We've done a lot of work with the easements. We've done a lot of engineering work with the whole entire project. They'd like to get this going sooner than three readings, so that's why I'm suspending this evening.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodford?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the, or, on the, gee, many, on the written record, temporary resolution number 112-19.
Second.
A motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 112-19. Further discussion, Mrs. Bobbitt?
No, thank you.
Other discussion around the table on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodford?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 112-19 passes nine to zero. We now have first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 113-19.
A resolution authorizing the Law Director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the city of Pickerington for prosecution of cases arising from criminal and other offenses that occur in the city of Pickerington within Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment, offered by Mr. Stoughton, seconded by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This piece and the following two pieces are basically resolutions that are authorized in law record to go out to the city to prosecute cases. He has to use the beautiful country of Reynoldsburg, the city of Fairfield County, and he will also have a discussion with the Fairfield County Commissioners, so all of these, I'll have to tell you, it's a piece of.
First of three readings then on temporary resolution 113-19. Temporary resolution 114-19.
A resolution authorizing the Law Director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the city of Reynoldsburg for prosecution of cases arising from criminal and other offenses that occur in the city of Reynoldsburg within Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment, offered by Mr. Stoughton, seconded by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton. First of three readings on temporary resolution 114-19. Temporary resolution 115-19.
A resolution authorizing the Law Director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the Fairfield County Commissioners for prosecution of cases arising from criminal and other offenses that occur in the unincorporated areas and villages within Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment, offered by Mr. Stoughton, seconded by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. President, first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 115-19. Temporary resolution 116-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the L.D.O. Fund 208 and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second, third reading of temporary resolution 116-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 116-19. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover.
Yes, this is to cover summer overtime expenses and vacations through the street department. So we just need to get that suspended so we can get the money back in that account.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodford?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 116-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 116-19. Further discussion, Mr. Schoonover.
No, thank you.
Other discussion around the table on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?[1710.12]